Good evening, everyone. Today is, oh my, Monday, July 12th, 2021, and we will call the City Council meeting to order. Before we get started, just make sure if there's an emergency that everyone, we calmly go out this door. And if it's a fire or anything, we want to make sure we don't use the elevator. You can go to the right, take the stairs and exit, go all the way down, take those stairs and exit. So there's two exits. If anyone needs help, please ask. And if you see someone needs help, please help your neighbor. At this time, we will rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to invite Pastor Greg Morris from the Parkway Church of God for our invocation this evening.
I want to thank again the mayor, City Council, for the privilege to represent the community of faith in these proceedings and opening up with the invocation and prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, who's full of righteousness, perfect and holiness, we come to you this evening recognizing that you are our great benefactor. We need you. Those who convene here tonight, our city leaders, do so out of a great desire to bring benefit and blessing to our community. We acknowledge, God, that you are the purveyor of wisdom and understanding, and so we pray that you would grant that these business sessions that come together tonight would do so with success and would glorify you. We humbly recognize our shortcomings, our faults, and our failures, and we ask you, O God, to forgive us. Make us ready for the hour in which we live. Give us strength. Give us ingenuity. Give us tenacity to see things through. And may we, on the completion of all the assigned tasks, may we recognize and honor and glorify you for the things that are accomplished. We ask this in the name of the One who was sent to be the Savior of the world, the Redeemer of mankind, the promised gift of new and abundant life. It is in the name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We will have a couple of presentations tonight. First, we have a proclamation by Mayor Day.
Well, good evening.
Bebe.
Let me just say that it doesn't get old seeing your faces again. You know, Pastor Morris and seeing firefighter LaCates and Chief, I mean, walking into a room, council, with all of you here. I missed you. It's good to be back. So tonight, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read, and we do have a couple of special guests associated with this proclamation. So I'm going to read it first, and then I'm going to invite one of our guests up here with me. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Matrix Soccer Academy is a skill-based academy system for young players and was founded by Charlie Jackson, a UEFA-qualified coach, former coach at Manchester United, and currently the skills development coach at Manchester City Football Club and the Scottish Football Association. And Charlie Jackson came to the United States in 2014 to run the first Matrix Summer Camp and saw firsthand the need for a vetted development program that could teach players from the eastern shore the intricacies and nuances of the technical side of soccer. And in April 2015, the Matrix Soccer Academy announced Salisbury, Maryland as its United States headquarters, awarding Salisbury the pleasure of being the first and only operation of the U.K. organization to field teams under the Matrix Soccer Academy name. And the growth of the Matrix methodology to attract youth throughout the region to become the best soccer players and people they can become was spearheaded by the relationship formed between U.K. President Charlie Jackson and U.S. President Brian Watson. And the Wycomico Youth and Civic Center acknowledged the founder of the Matrix Soccer Academy at a luncheon on June 24th, 2015, for bringing this prestigious offering to our community. And Matrix Soccer Academy has produced 17 professional soccer players and over 50 academy players in the U.K. and now fields six teams for boys and girls ages five to 15 after beginning with only one team in 2015. And the Matrix Mavens U-13 Boys Team recently went in the books as the first team from Maryland's eastern shore to win the coveted Maryland State Cup Championship. Now, therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim June 6th, 2021, is Matrix Soccer Academy Day in our fair city to commemorate this historic win by the Matrix Mavens, who are, quote, "serious about skill and serious about soccer." So I would now like to bring up Brian Watson, President of Matrix Soccer USA, to receive this proclamation.
I think it was, I'm pretty sure it was six years ago, the end of this month, that the mayor came out to Parker. I think it was our second summer camp that we'd offer, second time Charlie had come over. And that was out at Parker before they took our soccer fields away, made them all diamonds. But yeah, it was sort of a springboard for us. There was some press coverage, and we knew what we could bring to the community, but he helped us kind of spring into what has happened over the last six months, six years. Now, six years removed, we've kind of proven what we're capable of. We've seen what you have done and what the mayor has done with our city, and we look at this as another springboard for what we think we can accomplish moving forward. I know I speak for our parents and our kids. We are humbled and honored by this proclamation. It means a tremendous amount to us, and we hope there's bigger and better things to come with our future. Now, I know, I believe Charlie's with us on Zoom from England. It's about 11:00 p.m. there, but he was anxious to partake in this, so I think he'd like to say a few words if we had that opportunity.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
It's an extremely huge honor for me back in the U.K. to accept this. It's probably one of the biggest things we've done thus far. When me and Brian met years ago, it sounds like decades ago now, because it's with everything that's gone on this year with COVID, you've had it like we've had it. It's an incredibly slow pandemic to move on. It feels like a decade, to be honest with you, this year. But it's been an incredible year for us here in the U.K. too. The school I work at, which is only a very small school, have won the national title. This is our fourth now, I think, nine titles since 2014, which has been incredible. So when me and Brian first met way back in the day, it was a challenge to bring it to the U.S. because we know the stiff competition that we're over there, some great soccer schools, some great soccer academies and clubs in the area. But Brian is such a great leader, an honest guy. He's become my best friend over the last few years and like a brother. And when we set this out, so the target was really to produce good players and quality players. You know, we started off very small, and we're still very small in comparison to some of the clubs we compete. So for us to compete in the State Cup is huge. To win it is movie material, to be honest with you. The pride I have with Brian, the support of the community, the state, I'd like to give a special mention to Andy as well, who's been fantastic, the mayor. He's been a follower of us, I'm sure, as well with Andy. My gratitude goes out to those people because they've been so supportive to the cause. And I think the achievement really is for everybody, our parents, the kids. The kids have made it so special, and we have Zoom calls regularly when we talk to each other, and, you know, they make me feel humble in what we're doing. And like Brian just said, the journey is just beginning. So to get this proclamation is a huge honor, which we both receive very humbly. And I can't thank you all enough for your support, and it is a privilege and an honor to speak tonight in front of you guys. Now, we're hoping, I'm hoping to be flying over there in the next month if the border's open. Obviously, the borders are closed between the U.K. and Europe at the moment. We're hoping that's going to change in the next few weeks. But if not, then I'm sure we'll catch up later in the year because I can't wait to come back. I miss the area. I miss Brian. I know that sounds really corny, but, you know, we speak daily, but, you know, just to see each other face to face would be so special, and I miss the kids. So it is an honor. So thank you for everybody for your support and your continual support. And Brian, thank you again because without you, we don't exist. And you took this methodology on so many years ago and believed in it and pushed it, and it just makes me proud. And I can't say anymore. And I'll be drinking a glass of champagne after this in all of you. So thank you again for that.
Mr. President, if I may. Charlie, this is Mayor Day again. I just want to say, first, thank you for staying up so late. For us, we appreciate it, one. But two, I think it's really important that we all acknowledge and recognize that, you know, you shouldn't have to grow up in Houston or Baltimore or New York to have access to good coaching and good teaching. And what I've come to learn about the system that you've introduced to young people in our area is one of teaching them leadership and independence, independent thought and creativity, and the ability to become leaders, not only on a soccer field but in their own life. So I thank you for that. I think our young people, our families here, thank you for that. So Charlie, Brian, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Our next presentation is going to be with Chief, and we have Chairman Mike Commu and volunteer Bill Peters from the Employer Support to the Guard and Reserve.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
It's Mike Como.
Oh, sorry.
Hey, French Canadians, tough.
English is tough.
And Bill Peters with me. Bill, come up here with me, and Ryan LaCast, come on from your fire department, and Chief. Bring you greetings from the United States Department of Defense, and we're not here to draft anybody today. The ESGR is a volunteer committee of the Department of Defense and stands for Employer Support for the Guard and Reserve. And the reason that this committee exists is to foster a good relationship between employers and their citizen soldiers, their employees, who are members of the Reserve Component of the U.S. military. And most of us committee members, before we had all this gray hair that we have, if we have any left at all, we were, most of us were Reserve Component members at some point in our life, and I guess most of us couldn't quite let go, so we joined this volunteer committee upon retirement. And from time to time, we have issues with some employers in the state, and then there's other employers who are just fantastic and do a great job in supporting their reservists. One of those employers is the city of Salisbury. And because of that, we've written down here today, and we have some presentations to make to your leadership. And we know it's a team effort here in your fair city, all the way from the department through your chief, up through the council, and with your mayor, who I understand does have his own interest in the Reserve Component. And again, on behalf of our committee in the Department of Defense, we want to express our appreciation to the city. And if the president of the council was physically here, we have an award from him, but I suppose he's watching.
He's watching.
And I could present it to the vice president.
Sure.
And if, I'm not sure where Jack is.
He's somewhere in New Hampshire, undisclosed location.
Well, there's some French Canadians up there, I can assure you. So on his behalf, we'd like to present this to the council and thank you for all your support. You know, employers are required by federal law to grant time off and think they're basics to their reservists who are military members, but the city of Salisbury, we understand, has gone above and beyond that with pay during the drills, with a pay differential if there's active duty. And again, I can speak from personal experience. That is great, and of course, it's not just great for us. The people who hardly ever do get recognized are, you know, when I deployed, it was my wife at home with two teenagers. And we all know, they really, they're serving too. In fact, she's still taking pictures on behalf of things that I do. So, you know, the service never ends, but we also have a Patriot Award here for the mayor. Major. In my civilian life, I've been a solicitor for five different municipalities in the state, in addition to being a JAG officer with the Guard. So my greetings to the city attorney, I hope I don't have to extend any sympathies, but I know it's a tough job, but, you know, I also know from day to day, it's somebody like the city administrator who is the person who is dealing with the issues when, along with the chief, they have shifts to cover. You know, whether someone's on reserve duty or not, those fires still need to be put out, and those EMT calls need to be responded to. And I know it falls on to people like the city administrator and the chief to deal with those issues. So we also got a Patriot Award we'd like to present to the city administrator. And so she's sort of your boss today, and you know you're going to appear as well.
Guess who's coming next?
The chief. We also have a presentation of the Patriot Award to the chief because he is the one that really, it falls on him day to day, shift to shift. And I've been the lawyer to several fire departments, including the Prince George's County Fire Department, where there was never a dull moment. And I know you must have your moments down here also. That's just, it comes with the territory. So thank you for what you do just day to day, and thank you for supporting our citizen soldier who is doing really double duty. Get close to your chief. Want to do a group with everybody while we're in town?
Yeah.
Andy, you want to grab the stick?
I have one pin in the finger. Somebody might get one.
If you wait about 10 minutes, I can drive back.
Muck it with the Lord.
I like the shot out there.
Get in scooty.
Oh, yeah, you get your pin.
Yeah, I'll get behind you.
Shorty like I am.
There you go.
Can't see.
Am I that short?
Yeah, you are.
There you go.
Okay, on count of three. One, two, three.
How's your look like after 40 years?
You're okay, Jack. We'll turn you back around.
Thank you.
For the time, and thank you for all your support for our reservists. Anytime you want the ESGR committee back down here. We're okay to come back down here, aren't we, Benny? Okay, we'll be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say thank you very much to Mike and to Bill. It was very nice. I wish I was there, although I'm working hard up here. Well, my wife just left. But I do thank you very much, and you're welcome to come back, and I would like to sit and buy you a cup of coffee.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion, a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Jacken Jackson, second by Ms. Gregory. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. This time, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Blake. Second, Ms. Jackson. Mrs. Nichols, how are you doing today?
I'm good. Good evening. On the consent agenda, we only have one item, and it's the April 19th, 2021 Budget Work Session Minutes.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3113 waiving the city's comprehensive connection charge for 104 equivalent dwelling units allocated to the redevelopment of 130 East Main Street, 132 East Main Street, and 144 East Main Street.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We'll give that one to Jack. We'll give Ms. Jackson the second. Ms. Glanz?
Well, good evening, council. It is my first meeting back in this room, and it is wonderful to be back with all of you after a couple weeks off, so. Resolution Number 3113, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, waiving the city's comprehensive connection charge for 104 equivalent dwelling units allocated to redevelopment of 130 East Main Street, 132 East Main Street, and 144 East Main Street. Whereas the city of Salisbury, Maryland seeks to encourage development and redevelopment in specific areas of the city to include the Central Business Zoning District and the Riverfront Redevelopment District. And whereas the city has long recognized that fee waivers are effective methods of encouraging such development and redevelopment, and historically has enacted ordinances which set forth criteria for such waivers. And whereas on August 10th, 2020, the city council enacted Ordinance Number 2611, replacing, modifying, and clarifying the criteria for eligibility for a waiver of a comprehensive connection charge. And whereas First Move Properties LLC is actively redeveloping properties located at 132 and 144 East Main Street. And whereas the Ross Project was previously granted connection fees in Resolution Numbers 2883, 2924, and 2988, of which two resolutions have expired, and the third resolution has been made obsolete by the replacement and modification set forth in Ordinance 2611. And whereas the Ross Project requires a total of 104 EDUs of water and sewer service, and whereas the current comprehensive connection charge of one EDU is $3,710, and whereas the total comprehensive connection charge for 104 EDUs is $385,840. And whereas First Move Properties LLC has requested a waiver of the total comprehensive connection charge for the Ross Project. And whereas the Ross Project meets the waiver eligibility criteria set forth in Ordinance 2611 in that the Ross is located within the Central Business District zoning, zoning district, excuse me, the Ross Project constitutes new development and/or revitalization of an existing building. The Ross Project does not receive a capacity fee waiver for public-sponsored or affordable housing. The Director of Infrastructure and Development confirms that the Ross Project compiles or will compile, comply, excuse me, with all applicable zoning and building code criteria, stormwater management code, and all requirements of the Salisbury Historic District Commission. The Ross Project meets the objectives identified in the envisioned Salisbury master plan adopted via Resolution Number 2600 dated March 17th, 2016, as amended, and the Ross Project provides a public benefit by constructing public streetscaping elements and public amenities. And whereas the Director of Infrastructure and Development has recommended the waiver and submitted the allocation of the waiver request to the mayor for approval, which approval has been granted. And whereas pursuant to Ordinance Number 2611, this resolution is now ripe for review and approval of the city council.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
Jack, do you have anything?
No questions or comments.
Call for the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3113, signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. That's five to zero. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3114, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with First Move Properties LLC to allow for the use of soil located at the city's wastewater treatment plant for redevelopment of 130 East Main Street, 132 East Main Street, and 144 East Main Street. Mrs. Glanz?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
Sorry about that.
I'm so excited. Resolution Number 3114, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with First Move Properties LLC to allow the use of soil located at the city's wastewater treatment plant for the redevelopment of 130 East Main Street, 132 East Main Street, and 144 East Main Street. Whereas the city of Salisbury, Maryland seeks to encourage development and redevelopment in the city, in the Central Business District, the redevelopment area and enterprise zone. And whereas the city recognizes sharing available resources can assist in such development and redevelopment. And whereas the city has excess soil stockpiled at the wastewater treatment plant. And whereas First Move Properties LLC is actively redeveloping properties located in the Central Business District and known as 130, 132, and 134 East Main Street. And whereas First Move Property LLC has indicated that soil from the wastewater treatment plant would be useful resource in its redevelopment of the aforementioned properties. And whereas in efforts to encourage this redevelopment, the city desires to enter into the attached soil agreement setting forth the conditions upon which First Move Properties LLC can access the city's stockpiled soil.
Questions or comments?
No.
Call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. That's five to nothing. Motion to approve Resolution Number 3115, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with First Move Properties LLC to provide tax credits through the Horizon Program for the redevelopment of 130 East Main Street, 132 East Main Street, and 144 East Main Street.
So moved.
Give that to Mrs. Blake, and a second to Mr. Heath. Mrs. Glanz?
Resolution 3115, resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with First Move Properties LLC to provide tax credits through the Horizon Program for the redevelopment of 130, 132, and 134 East Main Street. Whereas on June 28th, 2021, the city council approved the Horizon Program via Ordinance Number 2669 to provide tax credits to eligible hotel and multifamily residential developments in the Central Business Zoning District and Redevelopment Zoning District. And whereas First Move Properties LLC has submitted an application for tax credits through the Horizon Program in association with its redevelopment of 130, 132, and 144 East Main Street. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development has reviewed the application and determined that it meets the eligibility requirements, or criteria, excuse me, for the Horizons Program. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development issued an official notice of preapproval, and in turn, First Move Properties LLC signed the letter of intent. And whereas the mayor has preapproved the Ross Project for the Horizons Program. And whereas pursuant to Ordinance Number 2669, this resolution is now ripe for review and the approval of the city council.
Any questions or comments?
No question.
No.
Call for the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3115, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. That's five to nothing. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I just want to point something out. The, the three resolutions that the council just voted in favor of are further steps toward reinvestment in the core of our city. And I was able to look through our comprehensive plan today, which is one of 17 adopted plans that encourage in one way or another compact infill growth as the way we should be growing. But our 2010 comprehensive plan, which none of us were in any elected position when that was adopted, and I think all of us would agree when we look at the goals, that the objective then to pursue infill opportunities as the primary way in which Salisbury experiences growth continues to be the values that each of us lives and breathes when we make decisions in support of our community. And that, you know, that's not only supportive of our rural character around us, supportive of nature, supportive of agriculture, but also supportive of a thriving economy. So I just want to say thank you to the City Council for your continued support of our principles.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2672 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, and give that one to Ms. Gregory. And City Attorney Heather Conyer is going to step in this week for Mr. Sullivan, who's also at an undisclosed location, I hear.
It's my second guest appearance, so thank you for welcoming me. I will warn you that I do take breaths, which I know Michael does not. So it may take me a little bit longer to reach. So Ordinance Number 2672, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the Finance Department to establish a project expenditure account in order to pay those invoices for Mitchell Landing Apartments that will be reimbursable through the Mitchell Landing Reserve for Replacement, R F R, account. And I will note preliminarily that there are some amendments from the first reader, and you have those in front of you. I believe you'll address those upon my conclusion. Whereas, the City of Salisbury owns the property known as Mitchell Landing Apartments. And whereas, Mitchell Landing Apartments was constructed with Partnership Rental Housing Program funding received from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, Community Development Administration. And whereas, the D H C D, C D A, regulations require that all P R H P funded projects establish and maintain a reserve for replacement, R F R, account in order to fund ongoing maintenance and repair costs and to enable the project to be self-sustaining. And whereas, a maintenance issue has recently been discovered at Mitchell Landing Apartments in Building 139, which has necessitated additional inspections of all apartment buildings comprising the Mitchell Landing Apartments complex, and will require some invoices for such inspections of the apartment buildings and the associated repairs to be paid by the city and then reimbursed from the R F R account. And whereas, D H C D, C D A, has provided written authorization for at least $60,000 in reimbursement to the city from the R F R account for approved expenditures related to this maintenance issue. And whereas, the appropriations necessary to execute the establishment of this project expenditure account must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the city authorizes the establishment of the Mitchell Landing Project Expenditure Account in order to pay those invoices that will be reimbursed through the Mitchell Landing R F R account. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, the City of Salisbury Grant Fund Budget, B and hereby is amended as follows. A, increase D H C revenue account number 12800-423300-76300 by $60,000. And B, increase Mitchell Landing R F R operating expense account number 12800-546006-76300 by $60,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 3, it is the intention of the mayor and the council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 4, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this Section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Entertain any amendments to this?
Moved amendment, amendment as read, I guess. Do I need to read out all the amendments? Yeah, okay.
She had it in there. Or do they need to read it?
Do I need to read it?
It's either or. There's such few ones. You can read them.
Okay. Line 21, insert "which has necessitated additional inspections of all apartment buildings comprising the Mitchell Landing Apartments complex and after the word building 139." Line 22, strike "which," and insert "for such inspections of the apartment buildings and the associated repairs after the word invoices." Line 26, strike $20,000 and insert $60,000. Line 27, insert "to the city after reimbursement." Line 45, strike $20,000 and insert $60,000. And line 47, and strike $20,000 and insert $60,000.
Have a second for that?
Second.
Mrs. Blake? Any discussion or comments on the amendment?
I do.
Okay.
I meant to mention this last Tuesday. After we have this inspection, and if it is deemed that all the buildings have structural damage, what are our plans for this development? Will we tear it down and build it back up, or will we leave it just, just a block, piece of land?
Is that a question? Who's that a question to?
There's a question to anybody that wants to answer.
Yeah, the, the city needs to get out of the housing business.
So we're...
This needs to be sold, and there, and there are interested parties. The state has recognized that they failed in the establishment of this particular type of housing solution. It exists in several cities across the state. It failed in every single instance. And, you know, we, they've left municipalities without holding the bag, but without the funds to do anything about it. So obviously, we're having to pick up the pieces ourselves. So I think it's important that we recognize that there are people and entities out there who are better at this, and to get them on board quickly.
So there will, will that be affordable housing? That will be replaced with, if there is structural damage and we do have to, you know, destroy the property or destroy the development, will there be affordable housing put back there?
Well, I think it's, it's too...
What I'm saying is, if, if we find structural damage to the whole development, the development will have to be torn down, because it's really, I don't know what else you could do with it.
That's, that's up to an engineer.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying.
No, that's up to an engineer. The, the state would have to repair it, and they would have to probably pay to repair it, and, or, or the state, and potentially, they put that on taxpayers of the City of Salisbury, too. But either way, whether it's repair or replace, those housing units are in desperate, desperate need. We need affordable housing.
And that's what I'm asking. That's all I'm asking. Will we replace it with affordable housing?
Yeah, well, the, the state will.
The state will. That's, that's all I need to know.
We won't. I don't think...
No, I don't, I'm not...
I don't think we should be in the business of building housing.
Either, but I'm just saying, as a development there, we're fighting for housing.
That's right.
So desperate housing, so all I need to know right now is if housing will be replaced there if it has to be destroyed. If the, the building's now, the dwelling, the development that's already there has to be destroyed and can't be, can't be rebuilt or can't be fixed, can't be repaired in any kind of way if there's going to be affordable housing put back. That's all I'm asking.
I, I just want to, I'm, I'm not sure that's the city's decision in regards, if it's not our property. If, if that property is sold, once it's sold, it's up to whoever owns it, I believe, if that, if they replace, or what they do with that property. Am I wrong?
Well, I, I think the only intent that the city would have at all would be in moving forward, it would be to replace the, at least the same number of housing units with new affordable housing units. Or renovated the existing affordable housing units. You know, I, I think again, you know, just the limited time that I've been back involved in this, my understanding is, you know, this, it's a poorly designed program, and I think, you know, everyone can agree to that. But our interest is in getting more affordable housing units in our community. At least the ones that are there, if not more.
And that's what, that's my, that is my main concern. Some because we're going to be displacing several families if it comes down to where this place cannot be repaired, cannot be fixed. And that's all I needed to know, because I need, my constituents are going to definitely ask me, because it's in my district. And when it comes down, push come to shove, I'm going to be the one that's coming to ask and question, so I need to know what it is I need to know to relay the message to them.
Thank you. So we'll take a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment to, or, 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 Ordinance Number 2672, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. And call for the question on the motion of Ordinance Number 2672 as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. All right, next up, we have a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2673 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, and Mrs. Gregory.
Ordinance Number 2673, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $20,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for eligible expenses associated with the 2021 National Folk Festival. Whereas, the City of Salisbury submitted an application dated April 29, 2020, to the Department of Housing and Community Development, a principal department of the state of Maryland, for a grant under the Operating Assistance Grant Program to provide the city financial assistance in carrying out community development activities, specifically assistance in conducting the National Folk Festival to be held in the city. Whereas, in response to the application submitted by the city as aforementioned, D H C D has awarded the city grant funds in a total amount not to exceed $20,000, which said grant funds shall be dispersed to the city in accordance with and subject to the terms of the grant agreement by and between D H C D and the city, attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. And whereas, Section 729 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the City of Salisbury. And whereas, appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the city council. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Salisbury the grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development, attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A, for the city's acceptance of grant funds in a total amount not to exceed $20,000, subject to the terms set forth therein. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget, B and hereby is amended as follows. A, increase D H C D revenue account number 10500-423601-X by $20,000. B, increase operating expense account number 10500-546006-X by $20,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 3, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 4, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this Section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Questions or comments?
None.
I just have one. I know on lines 41 and 42, after the account number, there's a bunch of X's. Are we gonna, is that to be determined? Okay, Keith is shaking his head yes. Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Five to nothing. Entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2674 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Give this one to Mrs. Blake on the second.
Ordinance Number 2674, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $12,708.50, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for offsetting COVID-19 expenses. Whereas, on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States declared that the ongoing coronavirus disease 2019, COVID-19 pandemic, was of sufficient severity and magnitude to warrant an emergency declaration for all states, tribes, territories, and the District of Columbia pursuant to Section 501B of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. And whereas, in accordance with Section 502 of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, eligible emergency protective measures taken to respond to the COVID-19 emergency at the direction or guidance of public health officials may be reimbursed under Category B of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Public Assistance Program. And whereas, the City of Salisbury incurred substantial expenses preparing for and responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, the city submitted a project grant application to FEMA for funding to offset expenses related to the acquisition of personal protective equipment purchased in response to the COVID-19 crisis, and the provision of additional fire apparatus and equipment to assist EMS units with transporting patients with COVID-19 or suspected of having COVID-19. And whereas, FEMA funding assistance has been provided to the city at a 100% federal cost share rate, resulting in the city receiving a reimbursement payment of $12,708.50. And whereas, Section 729 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the City of Salisbury. And whereas, appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $12,708.50. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. The City of Salisbury's grant fund budget, B and hereby is amended as follows. A, increase DHS FEMA revenue account number 10500-425120-XXXX by $12,708.50. B, increase S F D medical expense account number 10500-546016-XXXX by $12,708.50. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 3, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent... deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 4, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this Section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Questions or comments from the council?
Questions.
Call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. It's five to nothing. And last, we have a motion to approve ordinance number 2675 for first reading.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heath, second by Ms. Jackson.
In the interest of our sanity, I am going to summarize this 12-page ordinance. As Mr. Vice President has stated, this is an ordinance that is set for first reading, 2675, to approve 2021 general obligation bonds for a GOB air handler replacement, apparatus replacement, aerial ladder, field operations facility plan Phase III, garage, downtown streetscaping, Market Street shoreline improvements, Northwood and Bruington Branch culvert, ADA ramp and bathroom conversion, field operations facility plan Phase II, and the Port Exchange Riverwalk replacement. He will review the ordinance. You will see that the recitals set forth on page two trace the borrowing powers of the city's intention to borrow money to finance, reimburse, or refinance costs of the public purpose projects identified in Section 3 through the issuance of general obligation bonds, and to the extent applicable, general obligation bond anticipation notes and/or general obligation refunding bonds. Section 1 of the ordinance provides that the recitals are an integral part of the ordinance, and the terms defined therein, and not otherwise defined in the ordinance sections, shall have the meanings given to such terms in the recitals, and any official referred to by title in the ordinance shall include any person serving in the absence or disability of a titled official or in an acting or interim capacity, and any person generally referred to by another title, titles used in the ordinance confirmed to titles used in the Charter of the City Code, clarifies that references to principal amounts or proceeds of obligations mean the par amounts of such obligations. Section 2, in this section, the city determines to borrow money and incur indebtedness for the public purpose of financing, reimbursing, or refinancing costs as defined in Section 3B of the projects. In Section 3, the city is authorized to issue its general obligation bonds in one or more series from time to time in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $6,124,076, the bonds. Section 3B defines costs thereafter referred to as costs of the projects and the projects. It provides that the city may reallocate principal amounts among the projects without notice to or consent of the holders of the bonds or any bands as identified in Section 6, and that proceeds may be spent on any applicable costs of the projects, notwithstanding the descriptive names of the projects, including without limitation, costs related to changes in the scopes of and/or names of any of the projects affected through applicable budgetary procedures or applicable law, including to the extent applicable by resolution. In the event the city issues any bands, application of bond proceeds to pay or prepay principal, premium, and/or interest on the bands will be deemed applicable, will be deemed application for costs of the projects. This section also provides for the allocation and reallocation without notice to or the consent of the holders of any bonds or any bands of unexpected proceeds, net original issue premium realized upon sale, and/or investment earnings. In Section 4, the proceeds of the bonds will be used solely for the public purposes described in Section 3 of the ordinance unless the council enacts a supplemental ordinance subject to Section 3C. This section also specifies circumstances in which a supplemental ordinance is not required. Section 5 states that prior to issuing any series of the bonds, the council shall adopt one or more resolutions fixing, determining, approving, or providing for all details related to such series. Section 5 sets forth the types of determinations to be made by the resolution. Section 5 authorizes the council to delegate to one or more officials authority to make any determinations with respect to a series of the bonds. In Section 6, the city is authorized to issue and sell from time to time one or more series of general obligation bond anticipation notes, bands, in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $6,124,076, in order to finance, reimburse, or refinance costs of the projects on an interim basis. Details regarding each series of bands will be determined or provided for by resolution of the council, and any such resolution shall make or provide for the same types of determinations provided for in Section 5 with respect to the bonds to the extent applicable to the bands. By resolution of the council, the council may delegate to one or more officials the authority to make any determinations with respect to a series of bands. In Section 6, the city also covenants to pay from the bonds the principal of any issued bands, to issue bonds to refinance any issued bands as soon as the reason for deferring issuance of such bonds abates, and to pay interest on any issued bands. In Section 6, the ordinance also provides that the council may provide by resolution for renewal of any bands at maturity with or without resale, and for any modifications to the bands and related documentation. In Section 7, the city is authorized to issue and sell from time to time one or more series of general obligation bonds in order to currently refund or advance refund any bands issued pursuant to the ordinance, including paying issuance costs and funded interest, provided that the original aggregate principal amount of any series of refunding bonds may not exceed 130% of the aggregate principal amount of the bonds refunded therefrom, the refunding bonds. Details regarding each series of refunding bonds will be determined or provided for by resolution of the council, and any such resolution shall make or provide for the same types of determinations provided for in Section 5 with respect to the bonds to the extent applicable to the refunding bonds and other determinations required by applicable law. This section also provides for the allocation and reallocation without notice to or the consent of the holders of the refunding bonds of unexpected proceeds, net original issue premium realized upon sale, and/or investment earnings. By resolution, the council may delegate to one or more officials the authority to make any determinations with respect to a series of the refunding bonds. In Section 8, the city pledges its full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power to the payment of any issued bonds, bands, or refunding bonds, obligations, to the extent other monies are available for such purpose. The city may apply such other monies to pay debt service on such obligations, as long as such application does not violate federal tax code limitations or other applicable law. In addition, the council by resolution may provide that all or a portion of debt service on any series of the obligations may be payable in the first instance from other sources. Section 9 states that by resolution, the council may make appropriate arrangements in the event any put option, change in interest rate, or modification of any issued obligation could lead to a reissueance of the same for federal tax code purposes. In Section 10, by resolution, the council may determine that any series of the obligations may be consolidated with any other bonds, bond anticipation notes, or refunding bonds of the city as applicable and issued as a single series. In Section 11, by resolution, the council may authorize any modifications to a series of the obligations once issued and related documentation unless, under applicable law, the proposed modifications require action by ordinance in addition to or in place of a resolution. In Section 12, appropriate officials are authorized to take all action necessary to complete and close the sale and delivery of each series of the obligations and to consummate the transactions contemplated by such issues. In Section 13, the title is a statement of the substance of the ordinance for publication and all other purposes. In Section 14, it states that provisions of the ordinance shall be liberally construed. And in Section 15, the ordinance will be effective filing approval by the mayor or subsequent passage by the council over the mayor's veto in accordance with the Charter, Section SC 212. I made it.
Questions or comments from the council?
No.
No.
That. We'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
You did a great job.
Yes. Thank you.
I'm thinking if you got any city announcements or PSAs, you could probably have her read them. This is real... You want a second job?
I think I could read the waiver at the end of the commercial.
Ms. Nichols, have any public comments? Anybody wish to make a public comment? Jared, you got something to say?
For once.
For once, sorry. We'll go around the room. Counsel, any comments?
Just two that I have on my mind this evening. First and foremost, it is summertime and going into the fall. Please, all traffic, by state law, you have to give bicyclists three feet distance. So just be mindful that people are out riding their bikes. Just be aware. The other thing, of course, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood.
Be mindful of the COVID vaccine. If you haven't gotten your vaccine, please do. And we're now working on the 12 and up. Please get your children vaccinated. It's for their best interest. Please remember, COVID is still alive and moving forward, not as fast as it was moving before, but you want to stay safe. You want to remain safe and as safe as possible. So stay masked up as much as possible, still social distance as much as possible, and avoid crowds. Thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
Just want to second that. You know, just make sure you're getting vaccinated. You got vaccinated, get the kids vaccinated for sure. Absolutely. They may not like it, but they'll get over it.
Mr. Heath?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Yes, I have one, two comments, actually. One, this evening, without much to do, we passed three significant milestones in the continuation of our master plan. It's another tool in our box, and I'm referring to the Horizon Program and the associated resolutions. This is going to encourage developers to make significant dollar investment in our city. And as I quote the Vice President of the Council, heads and beds, and that's what it takes for a vibrant downtown. So I was very pleased today to vote in favor of all the respective resolutions. And I wish Mr. Simpson speed in his development, and I look forward to seeing the finished product. And the second thing I have is, we're not out of the woods completely with COVID, so if you haven't been vaccinated, please do so. All you have to do is look in those areas where vaccinations are down and see the increase in COVID cases and still COVID deaths. We don't need to have it, and we shouldn't have it. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. You know, I'll ditto everything he said about what we did with the Horizon Program, and, you know, and even in our discussions with the county council this week, as the mayor was before them, or last week, you know, many of these properties currently don't pay property taxes. So, I mean, this is, it's not funny money. It's money that doesn't exist unless we build, unless we develop these properties, and it will be a boon for all, and even for county residents. I mean, you could see a significant tax decrease over the course of the next 20 years because of the revenue cap. Next, I would like to remind everybody, as we get into the summer, you know, with heat advisories, make sure our people who are working outside, if you're outside a lot, drink water, take breaks. Don't spend eight straight hours in 100-degree heat with 100% humidity, which is what we have on the shore. Make sure we check on our neighbors who may have issues or not have working air conditioning. And last thing, as Grace Murdoch tells us, be kind to each other. Thank you, and we are adjourned.